Good evening and welcome to the Woodhaven Brownstown Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Call do you need me to wave at?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold that thought for just one minute. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Woodhaven Brownstown Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Called to order at 5:31 PM. Any individual wishing to address the Board of Education during this evening's meeting should compete a complete a comment card and provide it to Mrs. A Bear who's sitting down there. Miss A Bear, would you please take role?
Mrs. Barry.
Here.
Here, Mr. Rowat.
Here.
Mr. Harris. Mrs. Lowery. Mrs. Sanders.
Here.
Mrs. Thorne.
Here.
Mr. Greathead.
Here.
Those able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Prime Minister of the United States of America. To the Republic which extends, one nation, without division, liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I make the motion to approve the agenda as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Thorneing, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two, three, four, thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education believes it's crucial to hear from our community on matters most important to them and therefore provides two opportunities to address the board at our meetings. The first is now for items that are on our agenda. The second is near the end of the meeting and is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. In both cases, the individual time limit is five minutes. It's important to understand that while we take all questions and concerns from the public seriously, an immediate response should not be expected as we request time to process your concern and ideas. That said, district staff whenever necessary will get back to you in an appropriate timeframe. Miss A Bear, do we have any comment cards?
No.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Sanders, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as recommended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn over the meetings to Mr. Greathead.
Thank you. We have first under personnel recommendations, we have three personnel recommendations for board consideration in the areas of professional staff, support staff, and Schedule B. Under professional staff, the suggested motion is to approve the following professional staff employments en masse, effective 8/20/2025 as presented. They are Aubrey Banning, Wiggink Elementary School, GSRP, lead teacher. Kelsey Littleton, Woodhaven Upper Elementary School, halftime counselor. And Tim Raylu, Woodhaven Brownstown School District Athletic Trainer.
I make the motion to approve the support staff employment, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm back a page. I make the motion to approve the suggested professional staff employments en masse, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Chopak, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn over the meetings to Mr. Greathead.
Thank you. We have first under personnel recommendations, we have three personnel recommendations for board consideration in the areas of professional staff, support staff, and Schedule B. Under professional staff, the suggested motion is to approve the following professional staff employments en masse, effective 8/20/2025 as presented. They are Aubrey Banning, Wiggink Elementary School, GSRP, lead teacher. Kelsey Littleton, Woodhaven Upper Elementary School, halftime counselor. And Tim Raylu, Woodhaven Brownstown School District Athletic Trainer.
I make the motion to approve the support staff employment, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm back a page. I make the motion to approve the suggested professional staff employments en masse, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Chopak, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Roberts will introduce.
And she has over 10 years of school experience, including five years as a GSRP teacher for Monroe County ISD, and most recently as a GSRP lead teacher for the VAMU in public schools. Her mentor this year will be Mrs. Danowski. Kelsey Littleton, she'll be a counselor at the WU. Her mentor, Mrs. Canagawar, sitting next door. Ms. Littleton earned her Bachelor of Science in Psychology and Mental Health from Adana University. She is currently completing her Master's in School Counseling from Central Michigan University. She will be completing her internship concurrently during the 25-26 school year. She has had internships at New Oakland Family Center and Core Psych, as well as a volunteer experience with the American Cancer Society.
I make the motion to approve the support staff employment, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm back a page. I make the motion to approve the suggested professional staff employments en masse, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Chopak, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn over the meetings to Mr. Greathead.
Thank you. We have first under personnel recommendations, we have three personnel recommendations for board consideration in the areas of professional staff, support staff, and Schedule B. Under professional staff, the suggested motion is to approve the following professional staff employments en masse, effective 8/20/2025 as presented. They are Aubrey Banning, Wiggink Elementary School, GSRP, lead teacher. Kelsey Littleton, Woodhaven Upper Elementary School, halftime counselor. And Tim Raylu, Woodhaven Brownstown School District Athletic Trainer.
I make the motion to approve the support staff employment, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm back a page. I make the motion to approve the suggested professional staff employments en masse, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support? Motion by Barry, supported by Thorneing, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn over the meetings to Mr. Greathead.
Thank you. We have first under personnel recommendations, we have three personnel recommendations for board consideration in the areas of professional staff, support staff, and Schedule B. Under professional staff, the suggested motion is to approve the following professional staff employments en masse, effective 8/20/2025 as presented. They are Aubrey Banning, Wiggink Elementary School, GSRP, lead teacher. Kelsey Littleton, Woodhaven Upper Elementary School, halftime counselor. And Tim Raylu, Woodhaven Brownstown School District Athletic Trainer.
I make the motion to approve the support staff employment, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm back a page. I make the motion to approve the suggested professional staff employments en masse, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Chopak, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Roberts will introduce.
And she has over 10 years of school experience, including five years as a GSRP teacher for Monroe County ISD, and most recently as a GSRP lead teacher for the VAMU in public schools. Her mentor this year will be Mrs. Danowski. Kelsey Littleton, she'll be a counselor at the WU. Her mentor, Mrs. Canagawar, sitting next door. Ms. Littleton earned her Bachelor of Science in Psychology and Mental Health from Adana University. She is currently completing her Master's in School Counseling from Central Michigan University. She will be completing her internship concurrently during the 25-26 school year. She has had internships at New Oakland Family Center and Core Psych, as well as a volunteer experience with the American Cancer Society.
Not yet, but if you look down at the athletic hirings, we seem to be just nailing, if you get hired, we hit you up to coach. Mr. Raylu here. He earned his Bachelor's degree from Bethel University in Human Performance and Exercise Science. He recently completed his Master's degree in Athletic Training from Concordia University. And he has collegiate experience in football, basketball, softball, soccer, hockey, and track as a trainer.
Under support staff. Devin Newbill. Woodhaven High School Security Monitor, effective 8/20/2025 as presented.
Make the motion to approve the support staff employment of Devin Newbill, WHS Security Monitor, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support? Motion by Barry, supported by Thorneing, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Under Schedule B, the suggested motion is to approve the following Schedule B employments en masse, all effective 8/20/2025 as presented. They are Brandon Crane, eighth grade football assistant coach. Castiel Chemiak, middle school cross-country assistant coach. Audrey Nichols, eighth grade volleyball assistant coach. Mary Eve Peppin, varsity girls' cross-country head coach. Larry Sakliss, seventh grade football assistant coach. And Nicholas Smith, varsity boys' soccer assistant coach.
I make the motion to approve the suggested Schedule B employments en masse, effective August 20th, 2025 as presented, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Barry, supported by Sanders, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank, as others have, Aubrey, Kelsey, and Tim. Not only for being here this evening, it is, I hope, you know, it's an exciting, exciting time for you, but we look forward to the many years of outstanding contributions for the students here in our school district, so thank you very much. Okay, next under new business. This is the first reading of our policy revisions. First, I want to indicate that the original set of recommended policy revisions that I provided the Board of Education had an error in them, I made an error. In Policy 1000.01, indemnification, when I was re-typing the current clause of indemnification, I picked up about half of the next clause, which is discipline and removal, because my eyes caught similar words and languages in both clauses. So I have included at your seats a reprinting that includes the change, which is just a change to the indemnification clause. And I did also include one sheet with the post-it note that says "original" on it, just so you can see the original language. And you can see the clause right next to it that I erroneously picked up. So just wanted to make it clear what the specific change was on that one. For that one specifically, it simply adds the language "without waiving governmental immunity for board members. The school district will indemnify the board and individual board members to the extent permitted by law. The school district will also purchase and keep in effect insurance policies for the defense and indemnification of the board and individual board members." The other policy revisions, reimbursement of expenses. This one clarifies that board members may only be reimbursed for reasonable and necessary expenses directly related to their duties, explicitly prohibiting reimbursement for entertainment, alcohol, or guest expenses. I covered the indemnification one. 2000.02, graduation requirements, adds compliant language for the FAFSA challenge, requiring graduation standards to include legal and district-specific requirements. The district currently does not participate in the FAFSA challenge, but if we were to, this policy would then be in place to cover that. 2000.03, education records expands the definition of directory information to include limited directory information, such as student photos and email addresses, with restricted usage to safeguard privacy. 2000.05, communication, clarifies the process for posting and distributing materials on school property, emphasizing prior administrative approval and prohibiting materials that violate policy or law. 3000.01, curriculum development, updates language to align with Title I requirements and ensure curriculum supports students with disabilities and gifted students while maintaining equivalence across schools. 4000.03, conditions of employment, updates terminology from paid medical leave to earned sick time for consistency with Michigan law. 4000.04, evaluations and discipline, alliance teacher and administrator evaluations with recent legislation specifying timelines for improvement and consequences for continued underperformance, and requires board training for superintendent evaluations. 4000.05, whistleblower protection, clarifies protection for employees reporting unlawful activity under Michigan law with required procedures for reporting. 5000.08, meal charge slash food services, reflects policy changes due to free school meals under the State School Aid Act, including consistent procedures and communication to families and staff. 6000.02, safety and security, mandates the establishment of a behavior threat assessment and management team to address safety concerns per state law. 6000.03, firearms and other weapons, prohibits firearms on school grounds and introduces a new annual requirement to distribute safe firearm storage information to families. 6000.04, school crisis response, requires the district to adopt standardized emergency response terminology by the 2026-27 school year, and reaffirms authority to close schools for emergencies. And finally, 6000.06, substance use policy, strengthens language prohibiting all forms of tobacco, drugs, and vaping on school property or during school activities for all individuals. And this is an initial first reading. I have received some questions and clarification, requests for clarifications from members of the board. I will provide those for all board members at the end of this week, so that everybody has that same information. But as I said, at this point, this is a first reading. Should there be any need for additional clarification or questions, please just contact me. We will look to do our second reading and recommendation for approval at the September 9th board meeting. Next item is under report, superintendent's report. With the new school year fast approaching, we've posted several communications announcing upcoming events taking place in the next two weeks. Most important is the open house schedule. On Tuesday, August 26th, Brownstown Middle School's open house is from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. And the Woodhaven Upper Elementary School's open house is from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. And then on Wednesday, August 27th, Woodhaven High School, their open house will be from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. And all elementary schools will be from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. We are looking forward to welcoming staff and students back for another exciting school year. Construction is progressing at Bates and Gudeth Elementary Schools, Woodhaven Upper Elementary School, Brownstown Middle School, and Woodhaven High School. Myself, Mr. Belcher, Mr. Satterfield, Rob Kokoski with Plant Moran, Lindsey. We make daily visits to various construction sites as we monitor progress and get closer and closer to the start of the school year. The Van Horn Sidewalk Project is officially underway. The path was staked out two weeks ago and concrete pouring is slated to begin this week. While the parking lot expansion on the east side of the high school is underway, we are now looking at, I believe, the first or second week of school, that parking lot being completed. Woodhaven Tennis Courts Project is complete, with the exception of the new lights. Those will be in place by the end of August. If you haven't seen it yet, this is such a low-key project, most board members weren't really notified. But we painted the press boxes at both the stadium, and thank you.
They look great.
What I really wanted to achieve was the better ability to see Frank Scarton Memorial Field, which was always kind of lost in the background. And then underneath the windows, it says "Home of the Woodhaven Warriors." Now that everything's painted purple and that lettering is painted white, it really pops. And so we'll continue to dress that area with black wind screens across the back that have logos and other things on it as well. And then lastly, I'd like to speak in regards to the lack of a state budget. Most importantly, the lack of a school aid act and the impact this has on school districts across the state, including the Woodhaven Brownstown School District. A school aid budget should have been in place by July 1. The expectation, the law is that a school aid budget, a state budget, is in place by July 1 annually. School districts are now going into the 2025-26 school year with a great deal of uncertainty as to what their funding will be and whether or not necessary resources for students will be included. This is further compounded by continued uncertainty regarding federal funding and whether or not that budget will be resolved by the end of September. More recent concern has been voiced regarding the continuation of school meals if there is no budget in place. Please rest assured that the Woodhaven Brownstown School District will start this school year with the same exceptional and free school breakfasts and lunches that more than 3,000 students have come to enjoy on a daily basis. If there is not a state budget in place by October 1st, or if a school budget is passed that does not include meals, we will cross that bridge when we get to it. For now, all families in the Woodhaven Brownstown School District can expect us to continue to not only provide excellent meals, but excellent educational services as we always have.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board on topics that were not on the agenda? Again, please fill out a comment card and pass it along, Miss A Bear, do we have any?
No, but they're down at the other end, but no, we don't.
Oh, okay.
We could wait 45 minutes or so.
Does anybody want to fill out a card? Okay. Are there any comments from board members?
Just in a board report coming up, if we could get a, if there was a review at the end of the last school year of the athletic discipline policy. Yeah, especially when it comes to marijuana, smoking cigarettes, and vaping. So we can get an update on that. Thanks. But is there any concerns on opening besides the parking lot? Things that aren't going to be done?
No. No, we'll be good. Bates is still going to look like it's missing the front of its building, but we knew that going into it. The addition at Gudeth will still be a year-long project. But the classrooms look fantastic on the inside. This building here is coming together, Woodhaven High School. Woodhaven High School, uh, dental lab equipment came in this week, it's being, uh, installed. I was able to see that yesterday. Uh, other finishing touches are all, uh, progressing, so.
We could schedule something, if you already have a plan, but for the board?
Sure.
Even if it's after the school started?
Okay.
You know, to see the, the updates.
Will do.
Anything else? Okay, then I'd just like to take a moment to make Mr. Greathead very uncomfortable. Um, as you begin, what is this, year 14?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, as you begin year 15, we just want to express our health heartfelt appreciation for your outstanding leadership and unwavering commitment to our school community. Whether it's championing academic excellence, fostering a culture of inclusion, or navigating challenges with grace and clarity, your guidance has been a steady source of inspiration. You've helped create an environment where learning thrives and where students and staff feel seen and supported. In June, we completed the superintendent evaluation, which reflects the dedication and impact of your work each day, but this note and small gift are a token of the Board of Education's appreciation for your leadership and the excellence in which you carry out your role. We're grateful to have you at the helm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
We're into it.
Okay, if there is nothing else, this might be the shortest meeting in a year. Um, we'll adjourn the meeting at 5:50 PM. The date and time of the next meeting is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, at 5:30 PM in this LGI room. Um, best wishes to everybody starting a new school year. Have a good night.